Yeah, maybe, or we should get some live music or something. Or if you chicken ears got.
I don't know. Couldn't get anybody to show up to the minute and then they slowly started off right here. Just saying.
I'm sure, sure it's the buyers.
Oh, yeah, they probably say. Hey Christina, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Say something.
Can you hear me? No?
Yeah, for some reason, the owl's not working because it's hanging right in front of it. We were on the wrong camera and they did the wrong.
Oh, how does Zoom do it? There's so many of these things.
Can you pick it off with the, by the microphone or the camera that lower left? There's an affair usually you can take one of those to pick the microphone.
How about now?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Try to look there on next to stop video and see if it has a video choice there. Shot USB. Video settings. Yeah, there's no other options.
What are we looking for?
Well, usually we work off the owl hanging from the ceiling.
Right.
And I know we're not because it, the owl's hanging right through my head.
All I got is a shot, something or other. So the owl is.
Let me move over once so that.
You're up.
I'm gonna come to you. We're closer to you, Jeff.
Oh, boy.
It's cozy.
Makes you happy, I'm sure.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Board of Finance on September 21st, 2023 at 7:05 PM. I don't think we need to see any alternates. Everyone who's a poll member is here. Christina Montos is on the Zoom. Is there, let's approval minutes. Just want to be sure you all got the right one. The one with two objectives and the vice president in four or five places. He's vice chairman, however. June 15th, let's go with that one first. Is there a motion? Thank you, Pete. Second. Okay, Jeff. Any discussion? Any changes that, yeah, I know what you're checking. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any noes? Okay, thank you. That's, that's passed. And then the minutes for August 17th, I think it is.
So.
Thank you, Pete.
Sorry.
Jeff, seconds. Any discussion about the August minutes? That was the meeting where there was a little bit of a snafu getting the, the agenda posted, so we didn't take any votes. That's why we're voting tonight on the June minutes. These are the August.
Slight tangent.
Yeah.
This figure can you do transfers? Maybe if you do anything and follow, since you can vote on one side.
Okay. You know. Well. Joe, did you have anything? Is this okay?
Oh, I was in here.
Okay, okay. So all in favor approving the August 17th minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One abstention? Carrie? All right. Donna, before we go to President to speak, do we have those? Do we have any, any of those motions? That we need to redo for this month? Or do we need to, the transfers, do we need to resurrect those? Because I don't have them. Okay. Okay. And is that a point where you may be pretty close to closing the year? Thanks. Is present to speak? There's a guest user. I don't identify. I don't know if the person could speak up and give their name? No, I know, but it's, you're supposed to ask for. In town? No? Okay. Um. All right, anyone in the room who's present to speak? Not at this juncture, you'll have an opportunity at the end if you want to, after you see all the fun action. All right, so the things, let's see, the things I wanted to say is that we are still in dire need of a reporting secretary because I don't know if Pete wants to take over the interim, but it's gonna get pretty fast and furious. So especially as we approach the budget year and have weekly meetings instead of monthly meetings. So what I'm, what I'm gonna ask, a repeat asking is if you know some people who might be interested in town government and who are pretty facile with paraphrasing and getting things accurately and following the course for, for doing good minutes, please let them know that we are indeed hiring. And actually, one person might be able to fill a couple of roles because I believe there's another board or two that I believe it might, it might be CIP, Christina. I'm not sure. It's looking for recording secretary services too.
Yep. Yep, we are too.
There was some talk about looking into a straight stenographer, but let me just tell you, these meetings are long enough that that would be reams of, of, of verbiage to read and that what I said before, which is kind of true, in its raw form, it can be kind of ugly sometimes, just as far as the way that conversations go and the shorthand we use with acronyms and different things. We try not to do that for the public's benefit, but I think it might be better to have someone who knows how to sift and paraphrase where needed and, and accurately record the motions and the votes and everything else and deal with the, the the level of information that comes into this board, which is really heavy during the budgeting periods. So if you all would take that in mind. The other thing. Pete made some comments at the Board of Selectmen meeting about asking the Town of Tallinn to revisit its scheduling because our, our emergency responders were pretty overwhelmed on Labor Day weekend answering all the calls in the area. And there are towns like Tallinn that don't schedule nights and weekends, and it was a holiday weekend and they had their hands full. And I appreciate that, Pete, because, you know, like six months ago, several of us, Christina and Lisa and I in particular, were pointing out the, the sort of uneven relationship we have on mutual aid and Tallinn in particular, we're answering seven calls to one. It may be slightly different now, Alex, but because ratios change year over year. But that is, you know, glad, I'm glad you noted that and it's nice to be on board on that together.
That came from Chiefs.
It did.
So we did have a conversation.
Sure.
We did have a conversation with, I had a conversation with Fire Chief. In Tallinn, they are working on some ideas and plans.
Great.
Eric is going to follow up with the community department, Tallinn as well. But there are conversations that are happening, so it's.
So do they recognize it as a?
They do. They're just, unfortunately, they're like everybody else. Staffing is just, you know, we're running into the same issue. Staffing is a problem.
Right. Thank you. I think that's about it. An old, under old business, let's go to the budget status with Donna and we have the. Yes.
Did we get a job description for the reporting secretary in writing? I thought I saw it, but I can't remember.
I did, but you know what? Honestly, I think it's a little out of date because it doesn't have in there that during the budget months, you have to, they have weekly meetings, so I, I want to update it, but I did talk to Eric a little bit about it. And I think what we should do is refresh posting it and maybe put it on the, on the the first one, you know, the open. What do you call this? Homepage? Homepage, thank you. Feel free to throw in a four-letter word that I might not, not. Home, homepage. Both are four-letter words. Okay, so the financials for August, Donna, you want to orient us a little? Like you usually do?
Yes, thank you. So one observation from the news. We budgeted for $50,000 and in two months, we've collected almost $10,000.
And speaking of, you did, didn't you bring that up like 10 times? What, if we had a budgeted before? Rev, didn't we have 5,000 as our placeholder before? So we, so it, and you both, you and I both talked about, well, 50,000 might even be modest, but I didn't think it was this modest. So. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any areas of interest you want to point out? Updates and Christina provided a little bit of information, but you want to sort of set up that and then take us through the ARPA updates?
Sure. So our last meeting was on Monday. It was the first meeting we've had since June. And I forgot to send in the agenda. We've been working on it and I forgot to send it in that morning, Friday morning, but it didn't matter because there was nothing for us to vote on anyway. We didn't. There was nothing for us to do. So we did meet just to discuss all of the different items and to get caught up of just sort of a recap of where we are. And since that meeting, Donna has sent me a, a list that I've passed on to you all of all the different projects, how much has been spent on each one, which ones have closed already, which ones are ready to close at the next meeting, which will be on October 2nd. And then at that point, we may be in a position to approve one or both of the projects that are on the list to, there's only two that are left that we heard and we're waiting for funds to be available, so. Doesn't look like we're gonna have enough without dipping into the contingency fund that's been put aside. It's in order to do one or both of them. And one of them, we had said we were gonna wait until the facility study was done to know if we, which is a, the light, some, a project to the library, to know if it was necessary, where it would line up in the, in the whole scheme of things. And the facility study is not done, so I don't know. But that's, that's where we're at with the ARPA funds. And there's gonna be quite a few that we'll be able to close, so that, that'll be good from a just moving things along perspective, so. That's where we are.
How do you, if you get down to deciding, Parker gets down to deciding between two, how do you make that determination? It's almost harder when it's simpler, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I, well, and, and I don't know, I mean, we might decide that the, the library one, for example, is not necessary. And then we'll probably put the call out for more submissions at that point. But we also know, because it's, it happened already with one project, that some of these ones that are not done yet might need more money to, to be able to finish. So, well, we, we were lucky that several of them did return funds in the, you know, $20,000 range, which adds up to something good. Some of them, we have yet to see what, what even the, like the one at River Road, we, we don't know how much that is actually gonna cost. So. We'll see. So, I don't know, we're just sort of in a wait and see where, what we need to do phase, but there, I guess there is a possibility that we'll be asking for more submissions at some point, so. Yep.
Okay. And remind us again when the, when the ARPA program sort of sunsets to.
They have to be spent by the end of 2028.
It's in cover, if I may, in cover by December 31st, 24. Fully spent by December 31st, 26.
Thank you.
Oh, 26, okay. Yeah, so we're gonna run out of time, so we, you know, that's why we want to move these things along. And that was one of the things when we were deciding which projects to take, is that were they ready to move forward as soon as they got the okay? And what we, what I think we're seeing is that some of them were not because they haven't even started them yet. So that's just a personal frustration on my end, but we will, we'll see how it goes. We, we still have a little time, so.
Any questions in the board?
Excellent question. Line 47, is the facility study?
Yeah.
What facilities or would it be all facilities?
Well, it's, it's all facilities and I, I think I, I heard Erica's in the room. She can explain more because the Board of Selectmen is actually heading that up, but.
It was all facilities. We were kind of pausing to see what the Board of Ed was going to do as far as their facility. And, you know, whether or not we keep that off, which is why we gotta move forward to make sure as all encompassing as possible. We don't want it done. Kind of need to see where they go with, that study they do. But it's gonna be down there. They have a bid out there, but they haven't acted on that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Um. Jim, wanna talk about the SBC they just met last night?
Yeah, we did. So the SBC, we met last night after a few meeting hiatus. And reviewed the both of the meetings, reviewed the final. The final report, the SBC is preparing, documenting the the PK3A school projects and results and recommendations. You know, to the town, Board of Selectmen, et cetera. We had a productive meeting discussing some of the final thoughts of recommendations. They were probably pretty close to a final, final version of the the goal was to meet, I think there's a conflict, there's a school meeting that what was our next scheduled meeting on the 4th, I think it's curriculum night at Paul. So we deferred and we're gonna meet next on the 18th. And the interim, the expectation is a final draft incorporating some changes and notes from last next meeting. Is gonna be passed around in the preceding weeks. And we hope to conceptually be able to vote on submitting final report to the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting on the 18th. October. We are waiting. I think there's very limited financials left. You know, still, we don't have the final report yet. We're gonna look around the next meeting. We're in the neighborhood of about $30,000 left that, that we returned. We'll have the final financial report that's at the meeting next month, and that didn't happen for us, so.
Anything you want to say about sticking points on the final draft or is there?
No, I mean, we, there was a good debate last night, or not debate, discussion rather, about the recommendations and how best to synthesize some of the comments and rework the wording. But generally, I think we got, we do consensus, consensus on all of the points discussed, so it's in Phil's hands. He's making some final statements. Through what the chambers we drafted last month. And it'll be passed around for any final comments. And Collier's report, I believe, is just about finalized, but that'll be included as an attachment. So the recommendations from the OPM will be, as well as a number of other conditions. As part of that report.
Questions?
So this, in this, again, the reason for the meetings are to assess how to prepare the facility you currently have or to the school will provide many options to.
No, that's in the Board of Ed's review. They're assessing separately how to go about with pursuing renovations to the two existing buildings. We want that facility's updated facility assessment. So the SBC is really just closing out our process post-referendum. Drafting a final report for the town, saying this is exactly what we did. This is what happened. That here are recommendations as a result of that. And then for all intents and purposes, go with that.
And Collier's, the, the project manager and the, the school issue has already issued it. Well, they haven't issued it. They, they haven't issued it to the SBC, an executive summary on what they, what their determinations were, what their lessons learned and what they saw happening and some, some other data that's happened since the referendum, that kind of thing. So that's coming in tandem with what SBC is writing in their formal report.
Yeah, there's been no further expenditures. It's just, I think, we might have to place some of the catch moments, but beyond that.
Looking forward to seeing that, yeah.
It's pretty comprehensive.
Since the Board of Ed's here, do you have anything to say about that, the, the thing they were referring to about your work on bids and stuff?
We have decided our next step is to assess the current conditions of both buildings in great detail. And we put out our P. We have another meeting to discuss that maybe Friday, so maybe a week from tomorrow. Then we're gonna go and be ready for our next board meeting, it's the 10th of October, if we need to make any decisions, for example, on that. But there's a chance that we will move ahead with some revisions with the contract, with the one that, the one that we received. We may discuss if we back out to bid. There's a lot of options still, so we won't know more about that for at least another.
And would you identify yourself for the video?
I'm so sorry for the video. I'm Michelle Cunningham on the chair of the board.
Thank you.
Christina, just checking, since you're online, can you hear the audience okay? Since we can't pan this evening?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, Erica, the, the owl isn't working. Yeah, we're, we're off, we're running off the camera on top of the TV right now and the owl was not working and it doesn't give us an option. Okay. Well, that ended.
But we're a tight little group, so we got closer. Okay. Next up is new business and you have a new packet. It's a letter from Region 19 that they're opening Region 19 negotiations for teacher contracts. And that they have a meeting where they, where they start. It's kind of the initial meeting on October 2nd, which is Monday, I believe, at 7:00 PM. And so they're looking for representative, you know, this is one from the town and, and one from Board of Finance. Or a representative in the town, it could be from either.
Typically, the Board of Finance Chair and first one representative, unless you choose somewhere different. So that first meeting is really kind of open to, for towns to come to, or to share in where we're at, kind of financially. And then the GOC should have that timeframe at that meeting, which we have to give you that timeframe.
So when I was, I tried to, I mean, I did call them and just tried to see what the key dates are when they do negotiations. I'm gonna be out of state on October 2nd. So I don't know about that initial one. We could kind of, I can give back to the board about that. I wanted to put it out there in case there was someone with real intensive interest in it because of course the board can't appoint someone to represent the Board of Finance. But we do have a situation where we have several candidates for office and I don't know how long this process goes.
So the negotiations will probably be in effect after the new term begins, but who you should, then now it should be one of your board members, not a candidate.
Right. Right.
And then moving forward, when they give you some dates, you may need to, depending on who's still sitting at either table, need to choose.
But I don't have to worry if the, if the board members are candidates. They can still go and.
But they're, they're board members. If they're active and they speak for the Board of Finance, election has nothing to do with this.
Yes, but I mean, the process of the negotiations, do they travel into post-election?
I, I, my guess is yes. And the travel will start until after that timeframe and they'll have those specific dates for us then. So this is just an initial review. Where is the town financially so that they can kind of gather that information? And then my guess is that the actual negotiations will begin after the new term begins. And then therefore can either stick with the first one they have, or they may not have that option depending on.
So given all that, is there anyone who wants to put their name forward for this? I could, you know, Erica and I are sort of trying to coordinate with this. She knows I'm out of state and she's trying to get there too.
Moving forward, I, my intent is to, to go with the Board of Selectmen meeting. I mean, that's our normal schedule. On night, and this is really important that our voice is heard at that meeting. And our sense of step is really important. It makes you change the order.
Is there anyone who would really like to be at the table for this, though? You've just done duty, so I thought, you know, you're a candidate, so you're kind of, yeah, but.
That, like, into the city town. It's just. Not a bad time.
When you did it, Pete, was it a certain day, a certain, a certain day of the week?
No, it's because it was when the, it was when the lawyer from the, the teachers' union could make it and that was problematic. Let's, yeah, that's a good word, problematic. Because that, it dragged, it dragged out for an extra nine months because the lawyer is short.
If I, attending this meeting does not behold someone to participating in the initiative.
Okay.
That's a different representative, that's a conversation. Except the board, you know, if I attend and the Board of Finance, I feel like I can get a quick picture of the town. And then we discuss who to be at the table for everything.
Someone has a burning desire to.
I'm happy, I'm happy to step in, at least for this initial meeting, and we'll see what, where it goes if it's advantageous. I'm second, I can make work and then we'll see what happens because I have. For election this year, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah. I moved to send Jim if he needs a moment.
Do we need a motion?
I moved to send Jim.
Jeff seconds.
We're just seeing who got closest to the edge first.
Is there discussion, Christina? Is there discussion, Christina, I think you were trying to horn it, did I not, did I not see your hand up there?
You didn't see my hand, no.
Have they done that, kind of?
Yeah.
Is there discussion? That Jim's a stalwart, a member of the board, I mean, is there anything else in the other? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions?
Michelle, while you're here. When are the the town? Teachers' contracts?
They're almost always during the summer, so this is.
Yeah, no, no, I just didn't know which summer.
I was just saying, what year in the contract?
No, it, it, we have three different contracts we negotiate, we're not all at the same time, so there's a good chance that there's another one coming. This summer, but I can't tell you which one.
Didn't we just do the administrative?
We just do one of them more recently, but.
Okay, that's.
And the town will be. It's typically, it should begin.
Or trifecta, we might as well ask Alex for an update, you guys are entering negotiations.
We haven't picked a date yet, matter of time ago, we're hoping Novemberish, but. As soon as we know.
Coming up fast.
Be nice to have fair.
Okay, well, plenty of fun with. Union negotiations there, okay, thanks. All right. And so now we're, we're at Wellington Fire Department number one's. Three requests and I think it'd be good if we just talked about them distinctly, separate and distinctly, because they're kind of different. Okay. So Alex, you know. Identify yourself and talk about the first one, first, if that's all right, first, first.
Alex, one of the fire chief, the one of the fire department. Excuse me. So in C I P this year, sixty thousand dollars replaced the first equipment that's on our rescue pumper. This will make us compatible with Wellington Hill, but our equipment is also sunsetting, the equipment does not, we can't get anything repaired anymore. We blew a pump at the end of last year, we ended up having to buy one off of another department that operated their stuff already. I'm far behind with the pump.
How old are they? How old is the Hurst?
Over fifteen years, I'm gonna say, because. The pump's older than that, pump is probably two thousand and three. You're going from hydraulic to electric to a lighter. So there is the quote that I sent over that had fifty three thousand. In a six. Because I did not make it to the printer to get it today. That is for the equipment, the balance of the money is for modifications needed to the truck. Until I can pull that first pump off. We know it will be over the seven thousand, but I don't know the exact between them. They have to get the old stuff off, they have to take out chores. I don't have that last part, so. We can just do the fifty three thousand part or they come back or how old you get.
What was the one that you gave, that you did give us that was for forty two?
That was something else we were quoting. It was part of that quote, so we were looking if we had enough money to get one extra piece of equipment. But it's not.
So it's not pertinent to this, okay. Because I, I got the figure from the fifty three, but I didn't see any quote there. You didn't attach a quote?
No, just the fifty three. Oh, no, the quote should have been. On there, it should have been two pages, fifty three.
Did you see it? I did see. On the original request, I only got one attachment and if it's for the forty two, that that equipment that I didn't understand.
So the Board of Select had already gone through, or we've ended the Board of Select with this. We can vendor, so we come to you guys and then we can get this. Unfortunately, with Hurst, it's a single source vendor.
Okay. Any other questions and that, oh, could you just talk a little bit about the bracket and pump stuff, is that actually on the vehicle?
It is.
Okay.
It is, they have to take the old pumps out. Old first, or all the reels out, because these will already, those are able to, everything else is mounted into the truck. And figure out how these are mounting the space area.
And the background on the C I P is that it's been in the C I P plan, it's approved for spending this year. Are there any other questions on the board about this?
Yes, we need a. Specific motion for this. Let's see for the next one.
You mean, like, look, why don't we finish, if people have questions? And then we can do the motion.
Yeah.
Anyone?
What's the piece of equipment that you wanted to get that's not? It was a second rig or a second set of spreader or those are economy tools, all right.
Second set of what?
It's a, they call it a commie tool. So it has a second spreader and a cover.
Have they given you any ballpark, just rough idea of what the brackets could cost?
No, because they need to pull the the trays out because these, these are bigger, so they have to figure out when they realign the shelves, what. We know, we told them that we can't go over sixty thousand a minute. So. I, I honestly, I don't have a, they, they need to actually physically have the truck there to pull the pumps out before I can figure that out.
There, don't anticipate any surprises or anything that would jump.
No, there's power right there, so it should be hard to pull power.
Jim, Pete, Jeff, Christina.
It's electric, is this battery or?
Battery. There's gotta be powers to charge, right, charge batteries, so you don't end up on the side of a.
What's the life cycle of the battery?
Five years, I believe.
What's?
They're like, like a solid battery, it's pretty much the same thing as a.
Lithium ion?
Lithium ion.
What's, what's the replacement, we're not talking tens of thousands, okay.
Batteries like that, we have that by one, I hope, guessing.
I'm just thinking, you know, hybrid vehicle, you know, something like. Gotcha.
I don't want to pick these up now.
Okay. Well, then, I'll move to, please consider recommendation that the Board of Select would call a town meeting. To appropriate sixty thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund to account number zero four dash four zero four eight. W F D one Hurst extrication equipment on squad one thirteen. For the purpose of replacing outdated Hurst equipment. With state of the art rescue tools compatible with Wellington Hill Fire Department.
Second.
Thank you, Pete.
That was what, that wording there was going to be, oh, here we go.
Okay. Discussion?
The question for the town meeting is your exact motion. And I think you said that your exact motion is to consider a recommendation, so are you recommending?
I'm sorry, we'll recommend that the Board of Select and call the town can. Are you good with?
Second is.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Discussion? I feel like we've already chatted about this one, Christina, nothing on discussion? Okay. The C I P chair? Okay.
It is on the C I P plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Six, so. Okay. So then let's go to the second one, Alex, if you want to do a little.
So, as I reported, I. For last meeting, or meeting before, the mold remediation was completed. We were under budgeted twenty five something, defensive expenses for. A port of potty that was at that station, so there was some type of facility if. Somebody had to go there and call it that. It's getting to the winter season, we still have to maintain trucks in that building. We need to be able to put up some temporary insulation, we get the heat back. So we were able to get two quotes, one for the, to get the heat back on or back in the building. It's one for a thousand dollars. And then. The other is from. Economy Homes, a little fire chief, who does. Construction, is just to put up temporary insulation board. Along with the back wall, the side walls, just so that we can keep, retain some of the heat in the building once we turn it back on. That was for eighty two, fifty, seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So they're gonna use insulation board, and it's by. Four by eight, and it's sixty.
I'm sorry.
Sixty feet long and size, so. Yeah. Yes.
So when you say on the sides, you mean just that little bit, where the framing is, or all the way up?
All the way around the back, all down the back. From, they're gonna come up off the floor, try to be all the way to the floor. Can raise up a little bit, but they're gonna go up to the ceiling and then all the way. Along the back. And then they'll, where the offices are open, the sides, the offices and the kitchen, they'll put some in there. Where it's bare metal, but. Try to keep some of the heat.
All right, so it was, how much did it get heat turned on? Thousand, so. With the quote that's attached here, that comes to like nine thousand two hundred and fifty, you're asking for eight thousand one hundred.
So, oh, we. So of it, the remediation money left is eight thousand one hundred.
Four dollars.
Four hundred. Correct, so we'd like to be able to use the rest of that remaining money. All right, towards the progress, and then we're gonna use, we'll have to use our rest of our power, all right, or we'll use building agents. Okay.
That's, that's what I, you got exactly where I was going, thank you. Very, what were you saying, waypoint is coming, we toward the facility that you have, with one coming out, like, soon following, has it already done that one?
He's, no, he hasn't done the work yet, he's been out to figure that sound with the pole. He's waiting for us to give him the green light, we're hoping by next week.
And he's just connecting the, the unit here.
Yeah, he's got a cap all over every single radiator in Fort Worth. Got to cap all of those and then. Some of the drains don't show off correctly. So, yeah. Just let out.
So tell me a little bit more about what economy home improvement is actually doing here, so it's too much as bone, how it's, you know, it's. X P S, you know, what type of phone they're putting up.
They said. So when they described it is. Going from the boiler room to through the backside of the, like, the living space, the living room or the dayroom. They'll slide it through the back wall, we secure it, they're not gonna screw it in, but they'll tape it to the back wall. And then they're gonna do that the same all the way to the ceiling, there is a couple of studs that they identified that they're gonna pull out. So that they can do, you know, the bathrooms, this locker room, stuff like that. There is some space that they're gonna be able to drop from the back. Or from the mezzanine, they can drop down. Bill?
Yeah, how much of that is material and how much of that is label?
I don't. Oh. I, yeah, I, that's just a. Right, that was how, so I could get a number, because. We still have to, because so I have to get all the quotes, but I need to know.
Over five thousand dollars to follow.
Right.
So may everything not be a particular value.
Right, we just, we just didn't have anything to go on as far as detail.
That's what I was able to get for it. I, I needed a number so that I wasn't just firing five thousand dollars.
So this temporary from. So you're throwing up?
Yep.
For a year?
For a year, or probably as long it takes to figure out what we're going to do. Trust me, it's not an ideal situation. I, we have to find a way to heat that car. If you keep a fire truck in that seat.
So long story short, it's definitely take way longer.
Well, whatever you're on what they're doing.
Permanent is.
Yeah.
Your padding, is that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but they can't do the batting until we.
It depends on what they do, there's a lot of barriers to come into that, so there's a complicated process to figure out how they heat it around a board. Place or position or whatnot, it's maybe different. But he's looking at it. Pretty long time, I suspect. Hopefully not to one. But really, it'd be a while.
I'm guessing eight thousand dollars here is less than you hope you would spend an extra heat.
Oh, yeah.
In fact, they've got it.
Does he take the gaps or something?
Putting eight thousand dollars. We're, yeah, so everything that we can see, our trial, see. Before he, so anything that we can see on the outside, we're gonna try to seal that before he does that. Because most of that we can cock or something.
Yeah, not just to get as much, you know, prevent as much air, as possible. Yeah, it's already a whole.
You said, originally, I think you said one truck in particular you needed to get over there because there's just no room for it. Well, at the south station.
Right.
Is it more than one?
So the truck that, there's a truck house there now. It has to stay, there's nowhere else in town for it.
That's the one, and then, but you're talking about moving other trucks over for the winter or besides that one?
Just the one that's there.
Okay.
If any of them, then that truck will stay there. And then we'll get into the next topic. Your next bullet point.
I'm just curious if if you all did pursue asking. Tollander Stafford or the D O T garage in town if they had room to to.
D O T, kind of, uh. Or, well, I'm sorry, we didn't talk to state D O T.
That's what.
I'm sorry, we did not talk to them, we don't.
You were thinking public works.
I need, so for I S O ratings, I need to keep that part here, I need to keep that part here, although it could affect insurance rates on that side of town.
All right.
And I don't want to scare anybody that we have to take away, but I, I don't want to lose that.
So that's part of your drive for doing that, yeah.
I, I need to keep a truck somewhere that air. I, I don't know if there are, it's gonna be calls, but I've been getting calls from people that are already having problems with insurance. Stations. I don't know, that's what they're reporting to me.
I've not heard that. I'd be curious who's familiar with the person to.
So the, so the truck is there, which is, we have to. You gotta keep.
Any other questions, Christina, Joe?
Is there, is there any type of state funds that we could, we've tried to to get for, you know, for, obviously, first responders? It's an emergency situation, we weren't anticipating. Is there any state agency out there that could potentially help?
No current funding that we're aware of. Obviously, the whole first state bond, we need a lot more. We do have some legislators that said they'll work with us, once we have a project.
Refresh me that thirty seven thousand, we've been on, I was making a mistake, that was. That came from, was that surplus from? Who was that?
Thirty-seven thousand.
It was from the general. I think it probably took from. Something like that.
It's in the motion. What's that?
Can it get rolled to? Or get rolled?
Yes. Oh, Christina.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, and I can't totally hear what you, what we're saying, but I, I don't know if anyone asked about. Whether or not this foam board. Could grow mold on it. Over the winter, because if it's still, water is still coming in, then it would potentially soak it up and then still have mold and then we have to get rid of it in the spring. And, um, I don't know if it's a certain kind of foam board that doesn't, um.
We don't know, but it's, I mean, there's not a hell, there's not a heck of a lot of detail.
There's no.
But it's the type of insulation they put up against foundations, it's like.
Okay.
Business and addicts on the exterior, that being said, you know, if you have a mold condition, it will spread on it.
Yeah.
So if he's, I, I assume you've talked to him and, you know, where the bulk of that water is coming in at the. From grade or at ground.
At ground, so we're not.
See it, so you're gonna, you know, keep it up and remediate it and also, conceptually, I mean, this is, it's, it's an active situation, Chris, you know.
I guarantee it's an all good answer for you, I know. Wish I did.
Yeah. And it's probably the most cost effective. Way of getting something up there, it's not necessarily the best material, but, you know.
Mm-hmm.
What they're doing.
So nobody can dig a ditch right now?
They, they, we're digging a ditch today.
Mr. Bell, take care of the water. We might as well take care of it at that level, but.
Digging the ditch, finding the problem and being able to repair it is.
Yeah.
Not, not just dig a ditch and the problem's gonna go away.
Well, it drains somewhere, that's where water goes.
So they can get rid of most of that.
Could you, could you just get, get us up to date since the walk through? Did you guys did dig up that pipe and figure that out?
Yeah, so. Our. When we dug up the, so we're looking at back the building, the north side. Down south. That was the one that was clogged and had some water since this started. It actually isn't connected, it wasn't connected at the bottom, but then when we found the pipe, it's actually perforated pipe that was connected to water. So it's not going anywhere, it's just something. Back into the soil, back into the soil. So whenever they built the building back in nineteen eighty-one, they were trying to cover, do two things with one pipe. Kind of do a curb drain. And run the ground, run the water off the roof through it. We still, as of right now, have not found out where that pipe goes out. We have no idea, we've made it to the other side. And they're not connected. The two down cloths aren't connected the same thing. And we're out of area that we can hit, so, because we're right at the utilities. And unfortunately, it's gonna get to the point of. We need money to do that, but I need a project before I can come forward and ask for one. I don't. I don't want to throw a ton of good money at the bat if we're going to do. I don't know, I don't know what. So, I, you know, we had this conversation with the board of selectmen. The last thing I want to do is to throw money at something that we're gonna have to fix again. So we have to put up drywall. Insulation, stuff like that. We have engaged town engineer, trying to get some information or getting an idea for drainage for the back there, but we have not got. So what we actually have to do. It looks by the principle, the pipes all go through the parking lot or a trap, or a trap through down into the gully. But the way the lines are pitched, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but there's no pipes that go the other way, so.
The mystery continues.
That's the front flowing pipe, we did find that coming out over the, in the gully, the trash group. It doesn't flow a lot, but. It means trying to, you know, we have to dig in there, once we, we're gonna get a scope to go in. If we have to pull that line, we pull the parking lot and pull it out the road. Try to avoid that.
Christina, did you have your hand up or, or question? Okay. Are there any further questions before the board deliberates? Thank you. Thoughts? Do you want to? Motion on the table and then discuss, would that be easier? Okay.
I will move that we transfer eight thousand one hundred and four dollars and seventy-seven cents from line zero three. Three zero nine zero mold remediation two zero three three zero nine one winterize. When, William's Fire Department, one station thirteen. So I hope. I have a quick question for Donna first, is that a line item or is that a project number? Okay, I will, I will stay with line item, the line number.
Discussion. Pete has moved in just a second.
So, I, I mean, just one in general, if I'd like to see more. I know it's a fly by the seat of the pants kind of scenario, doing what you need to do. You know, I. I'd love to have a better understanding, I'd love for you guys to have a better understanding, you know, in writing as to what's happening. As projects move forward. You know, what is a one line? But we're two inches, you know, we're going to do inches of insulation. So. I get to meet, you know, to meet that.
He didn't have a whole lot of time to actually sort it better either.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a sense of how much of it is labor and how much is materials even?
I, I can, I guess it's one third, two thirds based on that growth, but. Materials, the lesser, but. Based on the square footage, I'm guessing, from the remediation. I have, it's sent back a couple of months ago.
Are we getting any other, any other books?
We will be, that was just me only being here, right? It's all three books.
Yeah, so there's a concept for that, you're not choosing a project. You're simply saying, yes, you agree with funding next number of dollars, so they can then go out and secure funding for a project.
I just want.
So they give you. I, I don't prefer to give vendor dates because they may or may not be used later and.
Right.
Bit of this line or not, he's just giving you an idea of what a project can cost to ask you for funding for money, so before the Board of Finance chooses the vendor. We'll be asking those same questions. They'll have to have a process to, to receive bids and follow it.
So a yes today doesn't necessarily say yes to eighty-two fifty, it just says yes to the next step.
Right, right, okay, perfect, thank you.
It may not be that then.
Yeah, the point is just making sure that you got your stuff covered accurately in value, it's either covered or we're not, something. So.
You got a worse poor case than me.
Well, I mean, sometimes you give it to the weak, right, so.
Well, that's funny.
Your job is to.
Something, and the project is determined at a different outset.
Do you have any idea of timing once you do go out to bid or go out for that second part that Derek just described?
Our goal is by October, the end of October, have us, have it done.
Have it done, and you have to go through bidding before that?
I got it, yeah, that's why we're here. It's, it's a weekend, you gotta be waking very loud. Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alright, let's take a look. All in favor of Pete's motion, do we want to restate it before we go?
I, I, I cleared that up with Donna, I was, I was ready to go.
Is anyone else want a restatement of the motion, or you guys have it in your packet?
Yeah.
Are you good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, item three. This is about, and we probably should state this just sort of roughly for anyone who is listening. This is a proposal to house one of the overnight E M T staff. Because, who is currently sleeping in the kitchen at station two thirteen. And this is an offshoot of the station thirteen closure. Alex, you're on again.
I'm here.
It's the Alex Show.
So, it was discussed at the Board of Selecting meeting, we don't. We are not allowed to keep one person in the kitchen anymore. We're never supposed to.
It's kind of a weird sentence, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So, anybody that. When the C I P committee comes and does their walk-through, they invite anybody that can come and see that building, that what they're actually in right now. So we've had one person sitting in the kitchen next to the stove. With the.
Is it gas stove?
Yeah. But there's. But it's.
It's dramatic, I'm sorry.
We can't keep doing that for safety of the employees. There's a leak of the stove or the hot water heater or anything else happened. The gas or the knob of the stove. Either way, it can't continue. So we've been looking at every different option that we can think of, what we could do for temporary housing. Step bar with the point of maybe leaving it in an apartment, so we did look at depot apartments, they don't have me available, but they're also looking at. Last one we could find, it was for rent there, a little fifteen hundred dollars a month for utilities or anything else. The goal with this is just, so what we're, we've come to is either renting or. Finding a trailer to put at the main station. That would put one person back up there. Then we go back to kind of the way we ran with code, one will be up there or will be at the other station. Together, they'd be together during the day. Really out of options, it's where we go. So. This is where we're at. I don't have a vendor because it will happen. The best price is that we, we know it could cost up to a hundred dollars. To rent it.
So, so if they did have an apartment at ten depot, it would have been half price from what?
Well, before.
Renting a trailer would be.
Before utilities and anything else.
Right.
Yeah. But it also doesn't put. The only nice part about this is it puts somebody back up there. It is not the ideal circumstances by any stretch of the imagination. But, okay, keep continuing to do what we're.
One question I wanted to ask you out of the shoot because you're no mention, the building, the building official and the, and the fire marshal. What, what, did they give you something, did they give you, not a citation, but something in writing, or did they say something to you?
They said if I needed it in writing, they will give it to me.
I just wondered if there's anything formal that we ought to know. Okay.
So if we, if you look at the code, the way that it's considered a. Sleeping area, it has to be somebody that you can't exit, you have this area, you can't. Sleep in a hazardous area.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. So I'm, I'm gonna open it up for questions that, you know, that Alex and others went here could help with.
I, I. I will do my best to ensure most of the possible candidates.
It's just a way outside of ox idea, but it's off camping season right now, have we considered just maybe asking anybody in the town if they'd be willing to donate their camper to the use of the fire department for a few months?
We have not.
I mean, I, I, you know, I drive by plenty of them, you know, on every road here, I'm sure, you know, they're underneath tarps and whatnot, I mean, there might be a nice citizen who's just willing to say, here, just, you know, use it as you guys need it. I need it back in April.
Christina? Did you just bring yours home?
This weekend, it's coming home.
And then come April, we still don't have a project and we still report this building, then we do, we're back in April, so I think, I think every option is on the table. I guess as Alex brought this to me, I can remember that multiple potential solutions feel, if they get funding to be able to offer them. Like expensive solutions.
Or being that it's off season, I mean, we could even purchase one as a town, you know.
Well, that's one of the things.
Reowned out there.
Right, there, there's enough of them that are.
We keep it in the fleet for the town and just move it as we need it to, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, doesn't hurt to have.
It's not a bad idea.
But, I, the only, the only nice part of buying one, if you can find a reasonable price, is that we're not stuck with the. In three months, we're renegotiating, trying to find, keep it red for six months or seven months.
On the other hand, you know. The only quote we have is the, the.
So we have, so we did look at, just we had to purchase, we can find some for fifteen to eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. They're about, look at it.
Right, but just to put it in context, at that rate, it's eighteen thousand for a six month period, so we're already talking about serious dough and it's all going out with no. You know.
If we were to purchase. If we were to purchase one of them, sell it when we're done, we may recruit some.
Yeah.
Um, they, they are hard to heat in the winter. You know, the ones that are meant to be out in the cold are. Super insulated and there's a whole curtain thing for the bottom and then you have to deal with ice and stuff, that, that's the reason why everybody doesn't camp in the winter. Um.
So, so we were working with the fire marshal of how can we put it inside the building?
Ah.
So we could, if we put it inside that firehouse. With heat on. So we.
I, I don't see how that's gonna be much different from his safety perspective, being an apparatus bay.
If we don't burn the propane on the trip. If there's no propane connected, because most of them are less there, so.
You're saying, you say you'd still be sleeping in the garage.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, which is.
Which is.
Which is a concern, and which you would be able to do without separation.
Right.
These days, we're building a new station, so.
I don't know any other options, that's what we're, we're having a very hard time. Is trying to come up with a different solution that. We, we looked at, can we run a beta bay at the south station to put another rule, without drastically altering, making, you know, blowing a hole up in the side of the building. Having a significant renovation cost atop of the main station issues. We don't have a whole lot of options. There, there really is no space at that south station, put another word. Beta wall with two trucks.
What, what do you actually need to be in there? A facility and shower. And some rest.
I don't even really need a shower, I need a bath, just a bathroom with dirty water. And we've looked at trying to find like a portable, or those, I, portable houses that they pay, or what the insurance companies have. Mold hole, try. Everything's beautiful and cheap.
So absolutely nothing's available, so I, I assume you gotta stay within a certain radius for you to get a rental.
If we, if we rented it, yeah.
Well, I mean, like I've rented that apartment.
What's that?
Like renting an apartment.
Yeah.
You want to be.
Yeah, we need to be within.
They said ten depot.
Right, so we looked at, there's actually a. One fifty-two River Road, so we're one forty-three, one fifty-two River Road has two. An apartment for rent, but it's, I think, two thousand dollars a, a month. It is big, with no fresh shoes and the.
I know we talked about this before, early on, but since you, I, I thought that the sticking point was, it needed some, I'm sorry. That it needed, the, the, the facility that we, you're talking about needed a shower. If it doesn't, I mean, does it, it, does, have you guys already talked with the Hill about? You know. You know, the temporary use?
There's no bed room there, there's no, we can't separate. They have to literally close their hall and let us have, then they would be able to rent those anyways.
I mean, they couldn't do anything in the, with the day room or anything, accommodate for, because it's over now, staff you're talking about.
Correct, but at the same time, that also pulls them out of that side of town.
Can you rent the fish and game club?
Huh?
Can you rent the fish and game club?
Probably old.
Right.
Right.
I think with some funding, many opportunities can be explored, just need funding to know that they can go out and look at an apartment. Trailer, like all of those options, but right now there's no funding.
Why is that preventing me, how many options look at that?
We can still look, but he has no, we have no funding.
Right.
So we're gonna go to a landlord and say, we're giving money we don't have and we have to go through our process, which we all know is not speedy. To determine funding and now said landlord has rented an apartment or. Found another use for their trailer, so I think, I think. What Alex is asking for, the town should be asking for an investment in mitigating this issue. Certainly before it becomes a much larger issue with building and or.
I guess. So I, I'm just wondering procedure, I mean, doesn't, you guys have a budget, can't you? Use budgetary funds and then come to the board with the request funds when you have a solution rather than an open-ended request that we don't have a solution for? I guess it's, it just doesn't seem to be like the appropriate process, admittedly, I agree with you, there's a need. And it's gonna.
So.
Twenty thousand.
Is twenty thousand even, I don't have a notion.
I don't, I don't. Point, so we were, we were using the twenty thousand, that would get us six or seven months. To figure out, hopefully to have a game plan of what's going on in our building.
Donna, is there anything within the. Within the Wellington one budget that would be. You know, appropriate to use for sho- short term before they could come back with a, you know, a proposal with a specific dollar for your need. You know, that would be an all right way to use to do it, you know, like. Accounting wise, like for instance, embarking on a rental or, or something like that. Because it, you know, just to avoid this issue of how much and how, you know. And, and, and also I just want to point out that this board has a capability of doing a special meeting for something this, this dire, and it is dire. But is there a way to do this so that it's not in this conundrum of taking a big part of unbalance and, and signing it out?
I recognize something in the project.
Yeah.
Well, there's a potential though for replenishing that, isn't there?
Yes.
It's like, I'm just saying, if it's like cash flow, they have cash, you know, and we. Uh, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but you know what I mean? When we actually know the figure, then we can whatever reimburse the line or.
I think what I'm trying to avoid. Is us doing something that we want to be upfront and work with the board and not we're going and just doing. And coming back and asking now, trying to figure out what it, what it costs out. That's why.
What do others on the board think?
I have no problem, like it's saying okay to the money, I just don't know what I'm saying okay to.
I.
You know, and it's, it's the same circle.
It's the open end of this, that it, it's the unknown and open ended. That, that is this. Yeah, I'm down with the trust court, but.
Jeff, Pete?
We, so. Twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund would get, get you started, is that what you're saying, chop it right down in the gate?
And we have, yeah, whether we buy or rent.
Whether you buy a rent or, or, or build a small house on the inside of the building or. Build a small house on the outside of the building or.
A tiny house.
Get a GP medium from the National Guard, I don't care, twenty thousand dollars from the general fund is where you need to get going.
I think it'd be less than that, but yeah.
All right.
That's, that's, I should get it to get going now.
Well, yeah, you have to have some kind of starting point. With the, you, but yeah, let's start.
We need to start, we need a plan first for all of this stuff, which is what.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to see a more filled out plan, but the plan to put somebody inside to drive an ambulance is, is, you know. Is, is plan that I. I, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, Jim, that's why I, I mentioned all those different ways of going about it. We don't know that yet. And, and I think what you're saying is. Correct me if I'm wrong, this, this twenty thousand dollars, we can start exploring a plan and then.
I think I'm, by the procurement process, I still have to move the board's line before I can.
Yes, before they can spend the money. So this, this gets the money in, in the starting gate, it doesn't start until the board of selectmen say start, and at that point I would. I hate the word assume, but I, I would presume that, that the board of selectmen would, would make a, a, a clear and logical decision this, before they said go. That they'd be, they'd be looking at the plan. That's, that's.
It needs to be narrowed so.
Yeah.
That they have.
Well, and that's, yeah, and I think that's where we're having an issue is, is there's so many different variations of what we could do. It's just not knowing. It's the nervousness of pulling the trigger without knowing that there's backing to it.
Is there anything?
So you need a guarantee to negotiate for something.
Yes, that is. In a nutshell, yes. Because I can't. I can't negotiate anything without having some type of backing that.
But can we, can we all talk a little bit about what the expected timeframe for this is, like what you're thinking in your, in your thought? No, no, the reason I, I know, really, it's, it's, there's a specific reason for this, I'm not really up for signing off on a, on a three thousand a month. Solution, I'm really not.
Yeah.
So, so I guess my question is, that just seems excessive for what we're looking at, we're looking at overnight lodging, not a whole twenty-four seven domicile, you know.
I don't disagree.
For an individual, so it's not like our houses or apartment rental normally is for people. So I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is, are you thinking twenty thousand would be a solution for twelve months if we had to? Or are you thinking six months?
One? If I can purchase a trailer, the board of selectmen would agree to that. If I purchase one for less than that twenty thousand dollars, we can have a longer loan that we have.
Instead of the liability problem. Sleeping in a.
Well, we, yeah, or we have to find a way to keep it outside.
Which then makes it more, that's what I'm saying, I, I mean.
I, I, yeah.
Like, no, I, I feel real, I do, I really do. It stinks.
Twenty grand should be able to negotiate some kind of short term.
Oh, I, I think the problem is, the reality is. Yeah, I mean, this is, it'll be through the winter before you really realistically have a plan of what's gonna happen at these stations. And then it's gonna be another year you're gonna have before you understand what's going on, so this is not a short term space. It's not gonna be, you know, okay, this twenty thousand is gonna get us through March, like. That's why I have such a problem with it being this open air, because it's not gonna be, it's potentially not the end of it. We don't even know if there's a workable solution yet. And I just, I worry that. You know, without. A better picture that we're gonna have a very long term. Something, whether it's a rental for two years or whether it's. A dozen dollars, you know, mobile trailer. I don't, I don't know, I.
Christine, any thoughts?
Um. I, I guess, I guess the only thought I have is that. Twenty thousand is probably not enough to, to cover what this is gonna be in the, let's call it the medium term, not. Not the short term of getting through the winter, but the, it will likely be a couple of years, in all reality of. Before anything is actually built. That is gonna be usable, so. Um. I don't know, I, it. It just, I, I, I just don't know what we're saying yes to, and I, other than we're saying yes. We are, you know, backing whatever, whatever the plan is, but that's sort of not how we do things usually. So. I mean. I don't know, I'm just having trouble even understanding. What, what we're approving and why, you know, why, if it's, if it's just to, to get you started, then is twenty thousand the right number even? Maybe that's too much, but I think in the, in the medium term, it's not enough, so. I don't know.
I was kind of wondering that too, if you, you know, how much do you have, do you have to have to get in the game versus. Cover a year, you know, like if you had five, ten thousand, would that be enough to enter the, you know, enough that you. You know, you have seed money and then, hey, when we have something specific, we can go from there. Because I think everybody's really hitched up with this, so. The amorphousness of this.
Dave Woodworth, I'm the assistant chief, I've been with the fire for thirty-five, thirty, Woodworth?
Thank you.
And I've been with the fire department for thirty-five years. I think what we're missing out here is something has to be done, it's mandatory for the fire marshal. We need housing. The twenty thousand, a- as you mentioned, we can always come back to the board if we need to extend this. So we definitely need something for six months, we need to get through the winter. Eating, yes, we've got men and women on overnights, we can't have them in the same facility, you just can't do that these days. So the, the twenty thousand, I, I know you mentioned it, open ended, it really isn't, it's. We're looking for a short term, six month solution, no matter how you look at it, we're spending. Probably a minimum of twenty-five hundred a month, whether it's an apartment, whether it's a camper. You know, you buy a camper, you can give it back to the town for use, as you mentioned. For other projects. Of the works, they need some, whatever, you can, you can always reuse it and recoup some of that money. But. Until something's decided in this town about what to do with that building, whether it's building on the building. Already talking about bombing for a training center, meeting room, proper bunk room, they were looking at on the side of that building. You have no idea what's going on yet, so until something is built at that end of town to suffice insurance. You need to start somewhere, we need to get through the winter with a plan. Twenty thousand, whether it's camper, whether it's an apartment, and there's no apartments found in that section of town. But something needs to be set in stone so we can proceed, look and get proper hassle for our member, for our paid staff.
Maybe Donna, can you clarify where the twenty thousand came from? It wasn't just an arbitrary number that was chosen.
Sure. First statute, the twenty thousand is the minimum amount that the board of finance can appropriate additionally to the budget from the fund balance. Maybe that exceeds twenty thousand. These two are the time.
But it's the board of finance minimum?
Maximum.
Maximum?
Yes. Yes. Twenty thousand or anything?
That addresses, even if the costs are gonna be greater, that's, that's the number to, to avoid the process of going through town meeting and everything.
Yes, that's what twenty thousand dollars does.
If you go to ten, you have to go to twelve.
No, not strong. So thereby the, the angst on the, on the board, I think. In deciding this. I mean, because it's, it's removing, you know, the town meeting process and it's, it's unknown that factors going into it are unknown. Understand why, why you're suggesting it this way. Okay, I'm gonna ask this question, I know it's like an unpalatable. Possibility and, and, you know, and I realize that and I realize I'm diving into the deep end, please don't freak, I'm seriously asking if this makes sense. Knowing that we're, we're like, that we're relied on by surrounding towns as well as our town. For ambulance coverage the way you all do it. Is, does it make sense to look at what our staffing is and whether we can even do an overnight staff, an overnight shift? During this time when things are up in the air with the firehouse and its, and its stability. As a building, you know, or as a structure and a base. I'm just asking, I, I know you guys have probably talked about it on some level, but I feel like we at least need to hear what you're thinking is.
We have thought, or talked about. Knowing the conditions in our surrounding towns, that what their staffing levels are, because we'll be one hundred percent honest, if we go down to one person tonight. That one person's running by themselves from a jury, trying to get a volunteer out, is it gonna happen? It may happen for the first couple of weeks, but after that, it's not gonna happen, because the ambulance isn't gonna get out. We will rely on Tom to get out or Shaffer. Or hopefully you kind, you kind of comes over. At what point are we now, as we're talking to Tom, or talking with staff, or talking with union? We're now the problem.
We're now the problem.
We are now the problem, but everybody's covering our calls, because we're having to. The ambulance isn't gonna get out of this.
With one, with one person, you can't do it.
And that's what everybody around us is, is facing.
Because every crew needs a driver and a, and a.
And a person, yes. And they've gotta be served, both people have to be.
To EMTs.
If I take, yes, one to be, so the driver can technically be what they call an EMR, emergency medical responder.
Right, so just a step down.
Yes. My other fear with that is if I take the second person away from the full-time staff, they're angry, because that means they are literally working all. That is change, you know. Change of work. They are literally trying to qualify themselves. And I don't think. There's a lot of calls, especially when you're going up on the high, but I don't really know what to say.
I understand totally, you know, I was.
Yeah.
I, I wasn't necessarily suggesting one person go alone, I'm questioning whether we can sustain the overnight shift, no one else seems to be able to. And we're the smallest player around, so it just seemed like a reasonable question to ask.
I don't, I don't disagree.
Given the expense that we're asking the taxpayers.
We have talked about that.
Yeah.
But I think we, we rely on that ambulance so much at night, and if you look at our nighttime call, like we're, we're busy, it's not just on the top, it's, it's our own calls as well. You know, last three nights, we've been out. One was twice, three times. And that's for our, uh, going usually.
Hey. Any further questions?
Um, I. I'm, I'm sure you thought about this, but just thinking about. Campers, didn't during COVID, didn't you use the apartment and, uh, up, up on the hill and put a trailer up there too?
We've rented it out now.
It's rented now.
Yeah, they had the house rented out, but we didn't use a camp, oh. I was stuck in a camper for a couple of months, uh, beginning of COVID, but yeah.
Yeah. And was, so is using any of the facility up at Wellington Hill a possibility with?
I asked that.
Oh, you did, okay, I thought, I thought somebody asked that, but.
In the church? Church, like, you just need a bathroom and a place to sleep, right, I guess is, you're more concerned about.
I mean, that certainly.
It, it, yeah.
But what Alex said, and there even, that there, the two, the two overnight staffers would be farther away that way, is what I heard was the big drawback. But you're still, I mean, they're pretty far away from, from, you know. Cause what I heard was the big drawback, but you're still, I mean, they're pretty far away from, from, you know, thirteen to two thirteen.
I don't disagree, uh, the only benefit is it puts somebody back on that side of town.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah.
They, they don't need to drive in the same vehicle to the.
In fact, they don't usually.
They don't.
They don't, but I can't. So if I were to bring somebody up to here, either they've got a less, which, which will be no issues cross-train their vehicles, or. I've got to find a way to swap some vehicles around with them.
I'm guessing nobody lives at that side of town?
What side? The side of the.
The side by the station, it's being renovated.
Thirteen.
Do you live that way?
Yeah, I do.
You do? Like a response time to your house.
Okay, you're getting into a whole different thing.
Not really, because that's.
I'm not, I'm not.
Do you have an extra room in your house? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about is response time, time to travel to the halls. You know, and you're young and healthy, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh.
But that's the benefit of having that second person that.
If anything, I think the, the EMT, uh, the ambulance part is the most important of.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure, I, I, my, my thing, I think, just, no, we have, fine, twenty grand break, I'm not a one to spend it on you, but. This gives you a chance to accomplish a plan, whether, I guarantee, if you have a guarantee of money, you can find something.
Reason.
It's, I don't have a problem with that concept, like where you.
We're gonna be here all night talking about the same thing.
Right, yeah.
But if we're doing, if we're doing, I mean, as it is, you know, Station thirteen is not fully operable, so, you know. To, to your point, Mr. Woodward, you know, I, I think it's, uh, it's, it's not really a response time from that station or that location.
Sure.
Cause they're, they're coming further. So, so Christina's point about could we do something that's really cost-effective, spend the money? You know, figuring out the big problem versus the short term, or. Why would that not be, why would that not be workable?
Which part, I'm lost, it's to which part? I'm sorry.
They don't have a lot to say. Okay, no, what I was saying, like, why not explore, why not explore the former St. Jude's site or logic? I mean, if it's, if it's doable.
I can talk to them, I don't have anything.
What's that?
You just talk to the land use department about the use of that, that totally changes the use of.
Yeah.
That is correct.
I'd feel safer with that than having them sleep in a garage bed.
It's too, it's too proprietary.
I, I'm just, if the safety concern is really the, you know, the crux of it, or it's, is a front component of this. Being that you can't sleep in the kitchen now, you know.
You're only set for normal regulations.
No, I get that, but we're still defining the regulations by having.
Yeah, it was meant to be very temporary, and now they're being told it's gotta end.
No, 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 I get that, I'm saying there's still a problem, sleeping in a camper in a garage bed, right, it's the same situation.
It's another, it's another safety issue.
Well, they need to pay in a garage day, they have to investigate that, and that will have to go through the fire marshal and a building official, those things have to be done, but. What are we willing to invest in, I think is the question, what are, we as a town need a solution.
Does anyone want to do a motion on this floor? Okay, Jeff.
Would it be possible, um, to outfit, uh, sleeping arrangements at the station now? Just something temporary?
No, it's at the, at which one, sorry, so.
Two thirteen.
Two thirteen.
Yeah. So to Station two thirteen, to modify it, there's not much, there, there's not enough room to. Yeah, it's, it's, it's really great, like.
Yeah, and, and what about the other station?
The, the one that's.
Yeah.
At the mall?
Yep.
No, because. There's nothing in there.
Go in the mall.
Correct. The mall's gone, the mall's gone, the mall's gone, there'll be, there's no toilets, there's no water, there's no, we're getting water turned on to be able to turn the front heaters on just to keep the bed.
And maybe, maybe taking eight to ten thousand dollars just to renovate something temporarily for, for sleeping arrangements there?
Actually, that's not a bad idea.
Something like that makes sense, I mean, I gotta imagine ten thousand dollars knocks the cover off the bedroom with, with the toilet.
That's.
And we control that.
Cause we're clear, they just need to get the sleeping quarters up.
It needs to cheap out, you're, you're, you're.
Either way, they cost funds, but again, if we be having plans, that might be a longer term.
I, I agree with both of you that that may be a, a, a solution, however. Uh, what I think is. What I'd like to do right now is move that we, we, uh, appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to Station thirteen to. Remediates sleeping issues with the ambulance group, and then, uh, if Jeff seconds me, then we, I have another discussion.
Sorry.
We have a motion in a second, the, the thing I'd like to say is that. I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Jim, and I, I understand your, your, your trepidation into, into spending money without a plan. I have a real problem with that myself, however, it's getting cold and these people need a place to sleep. And so if we don't move relatively quickly, we're gonna run into a big problem. So I, I, that's why I'm suggesting we start moving now, we give them the twenty thousand dollars to come up with a plan. The plan needs to be approved by the board of selectmen, so I think that our, our money is, is relatively safe. That's, that's where I'm leaning it at right now.
I, I, I think I'm in on this only because I can't, I just can't with an open end, it's a long term.
That's, I, I, I understand, I understand your point there, and.
Like, I, I'm fine, we'll meet the instant we have something, you know, uh. Understanding what the long-term cost may be, or what, at least the reasonable plan that we're approaching it. I'll, I'm here for a special meeting if needed.
Would you, would you be, would you? Would, would there be a comfort level with having the, having a friendly amendment to designate ten thousand to look at? Which would give flex to look at, you know, uh, reconstructing sleeping quarters in the, in, in thirteen. Or another avenue and have them come back if it's not working and they're going on to another.
Stephanie, I think, I think that instead of making that friendly amendment, leaving it at twenty, and if they could come in for ten, then that's which the board is selecting. Spend ten, return the under ten. But this, this would give them, give, give them some flexibility to look at more than one plan.
Yeah, just the, the statutory limit is twenty, but that is a maybe.
Yeah, I, I understand, I just, I, I just think that twenty comes out to, to, uh, two thousand a month for ten months, and that's a problem. You know, most of us are paying more, just much less than that, because we got our own work.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Dr. Keyman. Um. I think I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this. A roll call vote. Um, but in, since we don't have any, to have someone, could I ask you, Donna, to do the roll call for us?
Sure.
Um. So if you wanna just, you, you know all our names, if you wanna just call us, I, I wanna. First of all, I, I think there needs to be a friendly motion, if you're gonna move SP. It needs to, it needs to include twenty thousand from the general fund balance to account zero dash zero zero four. I'm sorry, O dash zero zero four, transfer out WFD one.
Okay.
Would you accept that for the?
I would accept that friendly amendment, I didn't see that, that.
You're gonna remove your motion and start all over with that written motion, that's like.
Okay, I didn't see the written motion, that's why I went with what I went with.
It's, okay. Well.
I.
It's, it, it, that's pretty much all of us, we don't have a written motion beyond that, if you wanna.
Oh.
I mean, I know with the.
Let me, let me withdraw my motion and give the written motion, I don't have the written motion, I, I just.
Okay, but I was saying, it's just, it's just what I just said.
Okay.
Just the, just the transfer.
Okay, I, I, I didn't get this page, that's all right. Uh, I have a second, you don't have to. Yes. You have to, second, second.
But maybe I could ask if there's a second instead of being asking since.
All right, yeah, that would be, that would be better. Uh, I move that we make a, fund additional appropriations from the general fund balance. To the Wellington Fire Department One budget for temporary housing for an ambulance-paid personnel, twenty thousand dollars from the general fund balance to. Is that O zero zero four, transfer out Wyndham Fire, Wellington Fire Department One?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stephanie, that page was missing from my task.
I don't think it, I think it was late, we didn't have this. Um, yes, would you like to, you can just?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff, who's that?
Yes.
James Marshall? Mr. Sherrill?
No.
Christina Mardos?
We can't hear you, you're muted.
No.
Suspect Summers?
No.
Hold number two, yes, motion.
So with that said, gentlemen, I mean. I, I, I wanna say, I know we support, you know, the ongoing needs, but it's, it's always. A lot of this always feels like it's the cart before the horse, where, you know, you're asking the town to group funding, like. The plan needs to go first for all of this, even with what happens with the stations, you know, like. The efficiency committee and departments need to get together and say, this is what we're doing, this is the proposal to the town. And it's, you know, I, that is the way I feel like this should work, right? Unfortunately, when it comes to, I, I agree with you when it comes to the station side, when it comes to sleeping side, I don't have that.
It did ju- it didn't just happen though, Alex, I mean, you know what I mean? It's, it's been, the situation's been going on for a while.
Correct, but we did just get close to the fire marshal, the test.
That's what I was asking you, there was something in writing.
It is not in the writing, he said, if he, if we wanted it right, he'll get it, but he didn't say.
That's why I asked that. Okay. Um, I did ask.
No, he, and I said, he actually did have it in writing, that the fire.
No, but I asked, that it was advised, but not.
No, it's, no, it's told, we have to pin it, we have to do that.
We, we understand it, but we still, it's still not something that's new, and the fire, the fire marshal's in your department, I would think he's already raised it. You know what I mean? Come on, so, it, it, so let's, let's, I just want to take a moment here and say, is there another motion? Tonight on this? Anywhere, anyone wanna make another motion to consider, given the discussion that you've all heard?
I, I took my shot, you wanna make a motion down there?
I'm just, just their people's second.
All right.
You know, some people have been living with this longer than others have, so.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What? What option does, do they have right now, other? Are there other funds that they can use, other department funds that they can use? Um, to, to start things? Because they, I, I do understand they have to do something, I just. That's just a lot of money. Um, considering that we have three, three actual fire department facilities in town, and. It's, it's. It's that we're already, you know, it, it's, it's more than just a, a mortgage payment that we're, we're paying for, so. Um, I, I guess. What will they do? What, what is their option right now?
I don't, I don't have an idea yet, I could talk to Wellington Hill again, I know when, they've been helpful, uh. But I, I don't have those, I don't know. The, the problem we have is without knowing that we have a backing, kind of notion, anything's very hard. And we can use our budget, it's just that, what does if? In a month or month and a half, if all of this, part of you aren't here again? Don't take that the wrong way.
No, go ahead.
Um, I have a fear of using my budget. I have your support, I understand that, we, I think we all understand and appreciate it, but if you're not here in a month and a half. And I have to come back in a month and a half or two months to say, I need to transfer twenty thousand dollars, this is what we had to do. Eh, let's hold on, something on the other end is gonna pour itself, so.
Well, first of all, I'm thinking it's, it, I, I'm thinking you're, you're, you're. Uh, you, you've got the energy of, of a fast decision, a fast, smart decision, but nevertheless quick, and you've had some. Time that you've already been ruminating on it or thinking about it. Um, you know, we're ready to come together in a special meeting, don't be thinking, we gotta wait a month. Is, is that fair to say, guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have just one question on that, what is it, what does it take to call a special meeting? Just in general, for town committees?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours and, uh, just, all right. Anybody can call it, you don't need a, like a forum or anything of people.
You do need a.
No, no, I mean, a forum of people to call the meeting or. Just to have the meeting. Yeah, that, that's what I'm asking, I didn't know what the process was. All right, two-thirds of the people in the committee say, yeah, a special meeting is fine, blah, 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 then you go for four. What would you like to see for options presented, in other words, camper options, apartment options, what would you guys like to see presented? To be able to come to a reasonable decision.
I'd like to see something that actually has a, you know, a specific price tag on it. Um, I wouldn't mind seeing more than one, if there's one that maybe would be harder for you, you'd rather have something that's. A higher price tag, not necessarily the lowest one, and why? If you want, you know, something like that, if you, uh, if you wanna make a case for something like that, otherwise I'm thinking that. Um, put some, you know, put some, uh, some. Uh, smart thinking and, and work your connections and, and, you know, think of a solution that it is if you had to do it. You know, this weekend. Um. You know, and, and talk to some of those people. You know, I'd like to see that there's some, that you touch base with the hill, and maybe they, if they don't have, maybe if it's not a facility, a facility thing. It's, they have, they have people on their, in their, uh, circle that could offer help in some way, that has some. Options that maybe you're only talking to people within your own department.
I mean, I want to see you guys have options that you know will work for the department and work in the needs of the town in particular, and, you know, that this is an option that's embedded, we see it's gonna work at least for this next six months, but ideally we factor it in. You know, we have an understanding of where we're gonna go for the next eighteen months after that, because that's how long it's gonna be, um. You know, so it's. Even if it's, I mean, honestly, if it's a higher dollar value, but it's a reasonable, it's, it's the plan that needs to happen, and it. Both the city, town meeting, whatever the case may be, you know, like, it's. We just need that understanding of what you guys need, and, and this is why we need it, and this is what we think of us, and here's a. Quite as good option, but, you know, we think this may work too, if we're in a venture, um. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Um, the, the only thing I would add to that is. That the fire marshal and the building official, you know, weigh in and say that it's, it's, it's an okay plan. And, um, and even, maybe, um, here from the actual employees who are gonna be living with those, um, situations, just. Just to know that everybody's on, on board with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Um. I think that's the end of our. Uh, the end of the business. the end of the new business and, uh, we have no correspondence that you don't already have in your packet. Present to speak. Do we have anyone in the new land who would like to speak? Okay, anyone in the room?
Yes.
Who's interested in speaking? Michelle? Please, please state your name.
Uh, Michelle Cunningham, forty-one Mister Road. Um, I wanna thank you for the fact that it's difficult to make decisions like this and all of you are volunteers, you know, that pay for this work. And it's important for the community to know that, um, you know, the people who serve on these towns committees are, you know, doing this out of their, you know, commitment and service to the town, as do, um, you know, everyone on the different boards. Um, and it's especially hard when you have to make difficult decisions like tonight. When you have to split, some decisions are really easy and other decisions are tough. And I really appreciate the fact that, um, you are doing your due diligence and asking for planning. And I think that, um, your willingness to move quickly when there is a planning place shows that you're, um, you know, your heart's in the right place, you're moving the right place, but that you're also being accountable to all of us voters, that you're being our watchdogs of the county.
Thank you. Anyone else? Stu?
Stuart Fisher, sixty-five, Elijah Road, uh, Democratic candidate for first election. Hi, everybody. I haven't met all of you, so I'm introducing myself to some of you. Uh, I echo those comments and my observations say how difficult these deliberations must be because it's public safety. And we're coming out of a very emotional school book where it was overwhelmingly rejected to build a school. And now we're going to reassess the buildings, reassessing facilities, coming up with formal plans to do that. I hate to sit here six months from now and to look at, and look at a mold ridden facility because we haven't fixed the drainage problem there. I'm harping on that because I'm not hearing solutions. We do need short-term solutions, but I appreciate your offer of coming together at a twenty-four hour notice in response to a plan that needs to be heard. But approving money without a plan, that was a problem tonight and I agree with what you did. Thank you.
Anyone else? You guys were here officially. If you wanna say, you can, you can. It's present to speak for. Christina?
Um, I, I just, um, was remembering something about, um, how we have a construction trailer up at the bus lot and how though, it wasn't that expensive when, you know, this was probably ten or fifteen years ago and, when that was purchased. But the thing with that is it's not connected to water. But I just looked up construction trailers and they do come with showers and they do come with a way that you can connect into um, the sewer or whatever that's on the property. So that might be a better alternative than even a camper, um, which you, you'd have more trouble doing that with. So anyway, I just thought of it and just looked it up and they exist. So I don't know.
Cause can you send me whatever, excuse me, link that you found that up?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Think, but they wanted my email and the rest. I don't wanna get junk emails for the rest of my life.
Good idea. And it sounds like you're open to hearing them from wherever. There's plenty of folks in the outside of this room that probably have good ideas. Okay, um, anything else? Present to speak? No. Um, Goodwill Fair, thank you for being involved in this process and know that we do very much prize what you do. Um, it was a difficult one. Anyone else? Okay, meetings adjourned. Or I should ask for a motion.
I moved to adjourn. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. It is, I'm concerned.